Today is Wednesday, November 12th. Approximately 4:02, I'd like to call to order the Bay County Board of Commissioners. If you would, Bay roll call please.
Commissioner Durancheck.
Here.
Begic.
Here.
Koonin.
Here.
Herrick.
Here.
Tilly.
Here.
Lux.
Here.
Krieger.
Here.
All members present.
Thank you. We'll stand for invocation and what I'd like to do is after the invocation, we'll have a moment of silence for a couple commissioners, past commissioners, Paul Brissette and Carl Rake.
Lord God, our heavenly Father, the strength of all who put their trust in you, we ask that you mercifully accept our prayer, because through the weakness of our mortal nature, we can do no good things without your aid, we ask that you grant us the help of your grace. Lead this commission, Lord, to work for the good of all. In your holy name we ask this. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for its stance on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I am assuming everybody had an opportunity to take a look at the minutes from the last meeting on 10:14. What's your pleasure?
Motion approved.
Any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next, we'll move into citizens' input. This would be an opportunity to address the board. State your name and address. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Krieger, Commissioner. My name is John Andrews. I'm a resident of Hampton Township, Ironwood Estates, and I rise today in support of Ms. Mary Ewald Sales in reappointment as a member of the Department of Human Services Board of Directors. Mary recently is finishing a non-finished term and she has proved a worthy asset to this Board of Directors, along with her medical background as a registered nurse and employee of Mid-Michigan Medical Center. She also operates and owns three small businesses which are vibrant and it also gives her a background in finance and in business operations. So, I would urge that the commissioners certainly reconsider her for another term to this Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Maggie Arbosa and the address is 1517 11th Street, Bay City, Michigan. I'm applying for appointment to the Bay County Building Authority. Ladies and gentlemen, Board of Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to meet with all of you. Although I've just recently moved to Bay City permanently, I have spent both summers and winters in Bay City for the last two years. Over this period of time, I have familiarized myself with the workings of Bay County government as well as Bay City government. I see many areas in which I personally feel improvements can and should be made. It can be easy to make this statement without actually being part of the decision-making process, but I also feel the committee needs to be able to make the best decisions possible for all residents and to explain its decisions to the public. I feel I can offer a fresh place with some new ideas to hopefully assist our Board. I certainly have the hands-on experience to accomplish this, setting policies, preparing and adopting annual budgets, setting fees and contracting for yearly audits. I see each project through to the completion. The mission of this Board of Commissioners must be to move the county forward and I would like to help you accomplish this goal. I have introduced a letter of recommendation on my behalf from Mayor Jim Wood, City of Oceanside, California. Oceanside is the third largest city in San Diego County and now has a population of around 200,000 people and it's home to Camp Pendleton. Once again, thank you all for allowing me to give you a few words on my behalf.
Thanks, Margaret. Have a good afternoon. Anyone else wish to address the board? Afternoon.
My name is Daniel Lumberner. I live at 703 Handy Drive in Bay City and I'm requesting an appointment to the Bay County Building Authority. I own and operate JR Hyman and Sons, a general contracting firm in Saginaw, 105 years old. I've been there for about 40 years. What I would bring to the table, my background includes understanding of business, finance, bonding. I'm also familiar with employee relations. I'm also of the people we employ at our company. There's about 80 of them because of last week. Seventy-two of them are union members and so I'm familiar with the unions in Bay City and I've worked on negotiated contracts for, been involved in arbitrations, mediations and a number of things in business. That's why I have it offered. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Ramsayer, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Krieger. My name is Larry Ramsayer. I'm director of facilities at Delta College. I live at 4719 Burt's Wood Drive in Armory Township. I really want to thank the commissioners for considering my application to be on the Building Authority Board. You know, I've been at Delta College for 30 years. I have, prior to that, I was in the Registered Architect and the Baptist Architecture in Bochum in Saginaw. My knowledge of building and building construction and working with the state of Michigan Building Authority on a number of projects that we've had at the college and I offer my services to come and appreciate your consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Mike Chatham. I'm a lifelong resident of Bay County and I'm here for the application for the Building Authority. I've been an electrician for 47 years. I hold a master's license. For the first 20 years of my career, I was a construction electrician. I'm very familiar with working with architects, reading prints, specifications, codes and so forth. I've also been involved in the community in various ways and as my last position, I helped negotiate, facilitate between labor and management the contract set next year. I'm retired and I look at this as an opportunity to become involved and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the board? With that being done, we will move on to petitions and communications. Under A, a public hearing for a solid waste management plan amendment. We need to...
Motion to revive our area of business. Support.
Discussion with none. Roll call please.
Commissioner Tilly.
Yes.
Lux.
Yeah.
Durancheck.
Yes.
Begic.
Yes.
Koonin.
Yes.
Herrick.
Yes.
Krieger.
Yes.
780.
Very good. So, at this time, if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on behalf of the solid waste management plan amendment, now would be your opportunity. Laura, I see you're sitting out there. Maybe if you want to kind of explain a little bit about what this amendment is about so everybody understands what we're trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you, the Board Chair. This is a proposed amendment to the Bay County Solid Waste Management Plan. It is in response to a request to establish a solid waste transfer facility up in the northern part of Bay County. We had to establish some citing criteria specifically to allow for that operation to be considered. I know Gibson Township, the proposed host community, has gone on record, they're very supportive of that, they passed a resolution for that. This is the middle of a public comment period, it's a 90-day public comment period. This public hearing is held today. Public comment period does not close until December 22nd, so even after today, there is an opportunity to hear public comments and receive public comments. After that, it does, you know, develop a responsive summary and then it goes to the Board for approval. If that passes, then it goes out to the local units for 67% approval by the local units. It has been a very arduous task looking at the prescriptive state and federal laws governing solid waste management. I'd like to thank Commissioner Begic, who's been on that, Solid Waste Planning Committee. It does address, there's the location citing criteria specifically for all-weather road, a Class A road. I know Commissioner Lux had raised those concerns early on and it does have to be accessible by as well as any access would need to be on a Class A road. The facility also must meet all other state and federal requirements dealing with solid waste management. So, those are the two main citing criteriums that we developed and it is what we're receiving public comment on today.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone in the audience? Seeing none, a motion to go back into business would be in order?
So moved. Support.
Discussion with none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Next on our agenda, we have a application for an obsolete property rehabilitation, this exemption district and certificates. This is for do-sos?
Support.
What's motion to receive?
Yes, to receive. Any discussion? I hope whoever's going to live upstairs is hard of hearing because we're going to be pretty loud. No discussion, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries to receive. Next, we have a request for an appointment to the Department of Human Services Board of Directors. Motion to receive would be in order?
So moved. Support.
Discussion with none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. It carries. If, Mr. Lux, if I can get you to come up, we'll...
We received, now we can vote.
Right.
We don't have a regular business, so we have to step off of this.
Correct. Correct.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Lindell, call her name.
First one.
I have the first one.
This is about who?
They don't. Good. I want to vote for...
He's the same.
From the area?
Two separate... Durancheck?
Mary Sales.
Begic?
Sales.
Koonin?
Sales.
Herrick?
Young.
Tilly?
Sales.
Krieger?
Sales, please.
Sales six, young one.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea. Next, under D. Oh, a motion to accept. Any animus?
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Any discussion? None. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. She is back in business. Under D, we have a request for appointment to the Bay County Building Authority. A motion to receive would be in order?
So moved. Support.
Discussion. Yes, Commissioner Koonin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to say that in reading some of the bios of these folks and listening to three or four of the, I think all the folks that did come up to the podium and speak, it's a tremendous group of well-talented people that are applying for this Building Authority position and let's create a seat.
I agree.
And I think, you know, if I'm not mistaken, the Building Authority is not what it used to be in regards to building any structures any longer.
Right.
I'm not sure if we just meet a couple of times a year to improve bonds or bond rates. What is it, Bob?
They meet twice a year now to pay the bonds.
Pay the bonds.
For both five months.
Yeah.
There's no project.
Okay. And Commissioner Begic.
I'd like to thank the paper also for putting an article in and that's probably why we got more applicants and IDN for giving them the information to let people know about these positions.
Yep. Anyone else?
Yes.
Mr. Lux.
I'd just like to thank all the applicants. As you know, we only have one position available and we have eight applicants, which is great. And I would just encourage anybody that does not get selected today to not stop trying to be part of the process, but to continue to apply for this Board in the future or any other boards or things that we can place you on in the future.
Very good. Very good. Please.
Durancheck?
Arbosa.
Begic?
Ramsayer.
Koonin?
Masig.
Herrick?
Ramsayer.
Tilly?
Masig.
Lux?
Krieger.
Ramsayer.
Masig three, Ramsayer three, Arbosa one.
So, we'll start all over.
Just the two, top two.
Top two, I'm sorry.
Ready? Begic?
Ramsayer.
Koonin?
Masig.
Herrick?
Ramsayer.
Tilly?
Masig.
Lux?
Krieger.
Ramsayer.
Masig three, Ramsayer three, Arbosa one.
So, we'll start all over.
Just the two, top two.
Top two, I'm sorry.
Ready? Begic?
Ramsayer.
Koonin?
Masig.
Herrick?
Ramsayer.
Tilly?
Masig.
Lux?
Krieger.
Ramsayer.
Durancheck?
Masig.
Krieger.
Ramsayer.
Masig four, Ramsayer three.
Congratulations and thank you for participating. Motion to accept?
So moved. Support.
Discussion with none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move into reports and resolutions of committees. Coming up first is Commissioner Koonin with Ways and Means. Good afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. From the Ways and Means Committee, we have Resolution 2014-211. This is a memorandum of agreement with the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms and Explosives for the Sheriff's Department. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion with none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Resolution 2014-213. This is a Bayonet Grant Renewal from the Prosecutor's Office. I move this resolution.
Support.
Any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Resolution 2014-215. This is the Swift and Sure Sanctions Program. It's a grant funding from Circuit Court. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion with none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Resolution 2014-216. This is the Child Care Fund. This is a placement appropriations from the Probate Court. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Commissioner Begic.
Michigan Association of Counties is working on this issue. They're working on some pilot projects, performance-based funding for this to try to keep the costs down. The private sector costs are quite high and they're trying to make sure that the people that are doing this are doing a good job and that I think there's some movement after the first of the year to change the funding on this and how much the counties have to pay versus the state. Hopefully, less for the counties.
That would be nice. Anyone else? All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Resolution 2014-217. This is IANTRA Service Agreement 911 Central Dispatch. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion with none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Resolution 2014-218. Next Generation 911 Phone System, 911 Central Dispatch. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Commissioner Herrick.
You know, having our folks here from 911, I think it's a good time to tell the folks in the county how much this is going to enhance the capabilities of the system that, you know, I've been working on this for quite some time, I know. And I think it's kind of fascinating and I think we're a step ahead of a lot of the state right now and I'm just going to kind of give us a brief explanation on what's going to go on.
Yeah. Central Dispatch. Kind of give you a rundown of what we're up to. We know that our phone system is 27 years old and is obsolete, obsolete since the beginning. And we wanted to look to develop a new system that was next generation IP-based and really open up the pipe to monitor information we could provide to Central Dispatch. And how do we do that cost effectively? So, we looked at our communities that are neighboring us, Tuscola and Midland. I mean, they were in the same situation, they have an aging phone system and they wanted to enhance that. So, we said, let's partner together, let's build a phone system and save some money. So, the project we're looking at is going to save us, if we went and built the system alone, it would cost us around $650,000 and we're going to be already around $275,000 in partnership with Midland, Tuscola. So, we're going to get an enhanced phone system that's going to allow us in the future to allow texting down the road as well as multimedia messaging and other information to come to Central Dispatch and really build that next generation piece that'll take us out next 15 or 20 years and do it at a much lower cost. And we're building that system in such a way that if there's other communities in the area that are interested in building with us and partnering with us, they can come onboard the system as well because there's room for expansion. So, it's not a system designed just for the three counties, but it's designed large enough that multiple counties, in addition to those three, can come onboard. We built it with future in mind to expand if available and partnering to save money lower costs to build that next generation piece.
Any other discussion? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Resolution 2014-219. This is the Bay Alerts Marketing Campaign Emergency Management. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Commissioner Koonin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I see Ryan's here and he wants to start your marketing campaign.
Afternoon.
Good afternoon, Ryan Mansbridge, coordinator. What we're looking to do is build the awareness out there in the public that not only does the Bay Alerts system work, but the ways that we use it and other entities within the county that use the system. We don't just use this system for emergency alerts, which is pretty much what everybody sees as part of the system, but we've partnered with other municipalities and other agencies within Bay County that utilize this system as well. The biggest thing that we want to happen is we want to see an uptick in the number of individual subscribers specifically to the email and the cell phone portion of the system because we know we're in much more mobile society nowadays. We do already have the majority of the landline systems in the Bay Alerts system, but those we only push out the voice messages to in dire emergency situations like the water emergency. When it comes to the day-to-day emergencies, road closures, traffic alerts, preparedness information that we want to put out, it requires people to actively sign up in the system with their cell phones and their email addresses so we can push that information out to them when we need to.
Commissioner Koonin.
How would one sign up for that?
You can either text the short code, text BAYALERTS to 69310, or you can go directly to the county website and at the very bottom of the main homepage is the link to the Bay Alerts system. And in there, you can put in your information for your cell phone, for your home phone and your email address. You can also add your physical address to that system so that if we have to do an alert that's in a specific location, we can geofence that, locate that area and push the alert out to the people within that that have logged their addresses in as that area. Just recently, within the last week, we did a geofence alert in Monitor Township where they were flushing some hydrants, for instance. We didn't want to hit everybody in Bay County with that message, we just wanted to target Monitor Township, so we pushed it out there.
Very good. Commissioner Herrick.
Yeah, I just wish you could repeat it once more because a lot of people are like me, you need to hear it more than once, just how you unpack the system again, how you have to do that.
You can text the word BAYALERTS to 69310, or you can go directly to the Bay County website. At the bottom of the homepage is the link to sign up that way.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Begic.
We had talked earlier, Verizon Carrier apparently had some trouble with the alerts getting out, mine were coming like a day late, but apparently that's been corrected now.
Yes, yes, we're working directly with our vendor and with Verizon to rectify that.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Resolution 2014-220. This is the Sheriff's Department Mobile Data Terminals Emergency Management. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion with none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Resolution 2014-222. This is the Sheriff's Department Mobile Data Terminals Emergency Management. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion with none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion to reject? Motion carries. Thank you.
Resolution 2014-221. Remonumentation Program 2015. This is grant documents and contracts. This is from the Drain Office, the remonumentation program. I move this resolution.
Support.
Any discussions? With none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
2014-222. MDEQ Agreement with the Health Department. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. No discussion. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
2014-223. Agreement with Minnesota Multi-State Contracting Alliance for the pharmacy through the Health Department. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Joel, if I can get you to maybe speak on this a little bit?
Sure. The MCAP or Minnesota Multi-State Contracting Alliance is part of the MyDeal purchasing program that the county is part of. What it will allow us to do, especially in light of the university clinic that will be opening in January next year, is to buy medical supplies, clinical supplies at discount and rate because it's part of the group purchasing program. In some circumstances, we anticipate that the discount is going to be exceptional, that we would see dramatic savings and that in other cases, it may be just the fact of just a slight differential in price compared to somewhere around other vendors. But the other nice thing about this too is that in the MCAP program, deliveries tend to happen faster and you're not dealing with the middleman, you're often dealing with the purchasing cooperative. So, not only just for the proposed clinic that we have coming up, but for the remainder of other health department clinics and operations, this is a good deal for us.
Very good. Any questions? With none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Any questions? With none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. [inaudible] Any discussion? Joel, if I can get you to maybe speak on this a little bit?
Sure. The MCAP or Minnesota Multi-State Contracting Alliance is part of the MyDeal purchasing program that the county is part of. What it will allow us to do, especially in light of the university clinic that will be opening in January next year, is to buy medical supplies, clinical supplies at discount and rate because it's part of the group purchasing program. In some circumstances, we anticipate that the discount is going to be exceptional, that we would see dramatic savings and that in other cases, it may be just the fact of just a slight differential in price compared to somewhere around other vendors. But the other nice thing about this too is that in the MCAP program, deliveries tend to happen faster and you're not dealing with the middleman, you're often dealing with the purchasing cooperative. So, not only just for the proposed clinic that we have coming up, but for the remainder of other health department clinics and operations, this is a good deal for us.
Very good. Any questions? With none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. [inaudible] Any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move into reports and resolutions of committees. Coming up first is Commissioner Koonin with Ways and Means. Good afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. From the Ways and Means Committee, we have Resolution 2014-211. This is a memorandum of agreement with the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms and Explosives for the Sheriff's Department. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion with none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Resolution 2014-213. This is a Bayonet Grant Renewal from the Prosecutor's Office. I move this resolution.
Support.
Any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Resolution 2014-213. This is a Bayonet Grant Renewal from the Prosecutor's Office. I move this resolution.
Support.
Any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Resolution 2014-215. This is the Swift and Sure Sanctions Program. It's a grant funding from Circuit Court. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion with none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Resolution 2014-216. This is the Child Care Fund. This is a placement appropriations from the Probate Court. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Commissioner Herrick.
You know, having our folks here from 911, I think it's a good time to tell the folks in the county how much this is going to enhance the capabilities of the system that, you know, I've been working on this for quite some time, I know. And I think it's kind of fascinating and I think we're a step ahead of a lot of the state right now and I'm just going to kind of give us a brief explanation on what's going to go on.
Yeah. Central Dispatch. Kind of give you a rundown of what we're up to. We know that our phone system is 27 years old and is obsolete, obsolete since the beginning. And we wanted to look to develop a new system that was next generation IP-based and really open up the pipe to monitor information we could provide to Central Dispatch. And how do we do that cost effectively? So, we looked at our communities that are neighboring us, Tuscola and Midland. I mean, they were in the same situation, they have an aging phone system and they wanted to enhance that. So, we said, let's partner together, let's build a phone system and save some money. So, the project we're looking at is going to save us, if we went and built the system alone, it would cost us around $650,000 and we're going to be already around $275,000 in partnership with Midland and Tuscola. So, we're going to get an enhanced phone system that's going to allow us in the future to allow texting down the road as well as multimedia messaging and other information to come to Central Dispatch and really build that next generation piece that'll take us out next 15 or 20 years and do it at a much lower cost. And we're building that system in such a way that if there's other communities in the area that are interested in building with us and partnering with us, they can come onboard the system as well because there's room for expansion. So, it's not a system designed just for the three counties, but it's designed large enough that multiple counties, in addition to those three, can come onboard. We built it with future in mind to expand if available and partnering to save money lower costs to build that next generation piece.
Any other discussion? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Resolution 2014-219. This is the Bay Alerts Marketing Campaign Emergency Management. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Commissioner Koonin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I see Ryan's here and he wants to start your marketing campaign.
Afternoon.
Good afternoon, Ryan Mansbridge, coordinator. What we're looking to do is build the awareness out there in the public that not only does the Bay Alerts system work, but the ways that we use it and other entities within the county that use the system. We don't just use this system for emergency alerts, which is pretty much what everybody sees as part of the system, but we've partnered with other municipalities and other agencies within Bay County that utilize this system as well. The biggest thing that we want to happen is we want to see an uptick in the number of individual subscribers specifically to the email and the cell phone portion of the system because we know we're in much more mobile society nowadays. We do already have the majority of the landline systems in the Bay Alerts system, but those we only push out the voice messages to in dire emergency situations like the water emergency. When it comes to the day-to-day emergencies, road closures, traffic alerts, preparedness information that we want to put out, it requires people to actively sign up in the system with their cell phones and their email addresses so we can push that information out to them when we need to.
Commissioner Koonin.
How would one sign up for that?
You can either text the short code, text BAYALERTS to 69310, or you can go directly to the county website and at the very bottom of the main homepage is the link to the Bay Alerts system. And in there, you can put in your information for your cell phone, for your home phone and your email address. You can also add your physical address to that system so that if we have to do an alert that's in a specific location, we can geofence that, locate that area and push the alert out to the people within that that have logged their addresses in as that area. Just recently, within the last week, we did a geofence alert in Monitor Township where they were flushing some hydrants, for instance. We didn't want to hit everybody in Bay County with that message, we just wanted to target Monitor Township, so we pushed it out there.
Very good. Commissioner Herrick.
Yeah, I just wish you could repeat it once more because a lot of people are like me, you need to hear it more than once, just how you unpack the system again, how you have to do that.
You can text the word BAYALERTS to 69310, or you can go directly to the Bay County website. At the bottom of the homepage is the link to sign up that way.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Begic.
We had talked earlier, the Verizon carrier apparently had some trouble with the alerts getting out, mine were coming like a day late, but apparently that's been corrected now.
Yes, yes, we're working directly with our vendor and with Verizon to rectify that.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Resolution 2014-220. This is the Sheriff's Department Mobile Data Terminals Emergency Management. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion with none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next on our agenda, we have a application for an obsolete property rehabilitation, this exemption district and certificates. This is for do-sos?
Support.
What's motion to receive?
Yes, to receive. Any discussion? With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
2014-223. Agreement with Minnesota Multi-State Contracting Alliance for the pharmacy through the Health Department. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Joel, if I can get you to maybe speak on this a little bit?
Sure. The MCAP or Minnesota Multi-State Contracting Alliance is part of the MyDeal purchasing program that the county is part of. What it will allow us to do, especially in light of the university clinic that will be opening in January next year, is to buy medical supplies, clinical supplies at discount and rate because it's part of the group purchasing program. In some circumstances, we anticipate that the discount is going to be exceptional, that we would see dramatic savings and that in other cases, it may be just the fact of just a slight differential in price compared to somewhere around other vendors. But the other nice thing about this too is that in the MCAP program, deliveries tend to happen faster and you're not dealing with the middleman, you're often dealing with the purchasing cooperative. So, not only just for the proposed clinic that we have coming up, but for the remainder of other health department clinics and operations, this is a good deal for us.
Very good. Any questions? With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. [inaudible] Any questions? With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. [inaudible] Any questions? With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
2014-222. MDEQ Agreement with the Health Department. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. No discussion. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
2014-223. Agreement with Minnesota Multi-State Contracting Alliance for the pharmacy through the Health Department. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Joel, if I can get you to maybe speak on this a little bit?
Sure. The MCAP or Minnesota Multi-State Contracting Alliance is part of the MyDeal purchasing program that the county is part of.
We didn't want to hit everybody in Bay County with that message, we just wanted to target Monterey Township, so we pushed it out there.
Very good. Commissioner Harris.
Yeah, I just wish you could repeat it once more, because a lot of people are like me, you need to hear it more than once, just how you unpack the system again, how you ask to do that.
You can text the word Bay Alerts to six nine three one zero, or you can go directly to the Bay County website, at the bottom of the homepage is the link to sign up that way.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Beget.
We had talked earlier, the Verizon carrier apparently had some trouble with the alerts getting out, mine were coming like a day late, but apparently that's been corrected now.
Yes, yes, we're working directly with our vendor and with Verizon to rectify that.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Good afternoon. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Resolution two thousand fourteen dash two two oh, this is the Sheriff's Department, Mobile Data Terminals, Emergency Management, I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion to reject. Motion carries, thank you.
Resolution two thousand fourteen dash two two one, remonumentation program, two thousand fifteen, this grant documents and contracts, this is from the Drain Office, the remonumentation program, I move this resolution.
Support.
Any discussions? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Two thousand fourteen dash two two two, MDEQ agreement with the Health Department, I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. No discussion, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Two thousand fourteen dash two two three, agreement with Minnesota Multi-State Contracting Alliance for the pharmacy through the Health Department, I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Joel, if I can get you to maybe speak on this a little bit?
Sure. The MCAP, or Minnesota Multi-State Contracting Alliance, is part of the MyDeal purchasing program that the county is part of. What it will allow us to do, especially in light of the university clinic that will be opening in January next year, is to buy medical supplies, clinical supplies, at discount and rate, because it's part of the group purchasing program. In some circumstances, we anticipate that the discount is going to be exceptional, that we would see dramatic savings, and that in other cases, it may be just the back of, just a slight differential in price compared to somewhere around other vendors. But the other nice thing about this too, is that in the MCAP program, deliveries tend to happen faster, and you're not dealing with the middleman, you're often dealing with the purchasing cooperative, so not only just for the proposed clinic that we have coming up, but for the remainder of other Health Department clinics and operations, this is a good deal for us.
Very good. Any questions? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Two thousand fourteen dash two two four, Household Hazardous Waste Collection Grant from the Health Department, I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. I just have one question, the grant that usually we went after, that was with Dow, correct?
That is correct, and this is with Dow as well.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to be partnering with some different community organizations that primarily have a tap for humanity, because they tend to get a lot of pay from people, but it's another opportunity where we can leverage community support and actually do bigger things with it.
Mr. Duranchak.
I have a quick, will you be offering any waste collections and stuff like in the northern community?
We did that once, a couple of years ago, if you remember. It did not turn out to be a big success, in fact, when we had it, we had a big trailer there, and we only had about six people show up.
I see.
However, though, because we are talking about partnering with Habitat for Humanity and some other community organizations, there may be an opportunity where we can utilize, they have a warehouse on here on road there, where we may be able to utilize that particular space, and that's a good central space for people to go to, but most people identify household hazardous waste collection at the fairgrounds there, and we went from having typically about forty, fifty cars in a morning to about two hundred this year, we exhausted the budget within three hours. And, you know, we're also looking at ways to make this more sustainable, and working with some of the trash companies or solid waste collection companies, to see if they would be able to participate as well.
Very good. Anyone else? No further discussion, thanks again, Joel, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Resolution two thousand fourteen dash two two five, this is kitchen equipment, bed ward, this is through the Division on Aging, and I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Resolution two thousand fourteen dash two two six, this is the eight hundred megahertz radio project, animal control, I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Resolution two thousand fourteen dash two two seven, I believe we're going to refer this to the December meeting, am I not correct on that?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Kelly, did you want to give a little reason why, or are we just?
The millages have been come and certified, but we need to be so many days, just in case there is a recomp or anything else. However, I would like approval to get the tax bills out for the municipalities that we maintain, which does not include the road mileage.
So we'll refer this to December, but we want to approve to get the tax bills out for our jurisdiction.
Correct.
Okay. I'll move that resolution.
Support.
Any other discussion on that issue? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you, ma'am. Resolution two thousand fourteen dash two two eight, this is the Community Education User Fee for the Community Center through Recreation and Facilities, I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussions? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Resolution two thousand fourteen dash two two nine, this is an RFP for the court facility in nine one one, this is a roof booster pump for, system for the county building through buildings and grounds, and I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. I have a question, maybe Rick, you can, with the removal of the bucket of water that's sitting up with a couple hundred thousand gallons of water, are we taking that down ourselves, or is there a company coming in?
We are going to leave that in place, we're going to drain it and leave it, and in the future, if we wanted to, we could dismantle it with plasma cutters and take it down piece by piece, but being empty now, it's been a sick.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Rick? Very good, with, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
We have, let's see, I don't know if there's a number on that one.
No.
Project updates?
Just received.
Just, okay, project updates from the buildings and grounds, project manager, motion, I move to receive this information.
Support.
Discussions? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, it's received.
Resolution two thousand fourteen dash two three oh, we have a variety of monthly payables, I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussions? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Resolution two thousand fourteen dash two three one, this is a waiver of ordinance adoption process, I believe that's going to deal with two three two, and this is through Corporation Council, so I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Roll call.
Oh, roll call, I'm sorry. Thank you, Cindy.
Coonan?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
Lux?
Yeah.
Duranchak?
Yes.
Beget?
Yes.
Preeger?
Yes.
Seven eight zero eight.
Thank you.
Resolution two thousand fourteen dash two thirty two, this is a retirement ordinance amendment for Bay Area Behavioral Health Authority, and this deals with the nonrepresented employees through Corporate Council. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussions? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Resolution two thousand fourteen dash two three three, this is a casual day for the United Way fundraising event, Corporation Council, I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussions? I just have one thing, if they're doing jeans this time of the year, maybe we should do shorts in July. Hey, you could raise a lot of money. Anyone else?
Or not.
Well, there you go. We'll have basically time soon to take the picture, Mike. All right. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Two thousand fourteen dash two thirty four, variety of budget adjustments, I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Resolution two thousand fourteen dash two thirty five, this is Office Max Automated Toner Replacement Program through the IS system, I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. I only have one comment to make, what a great idea. Nobody will have to be scrambling, looking for toner when they can't print, so, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
And we have the analysis of general fund, unreserved, undesignated balance, motion to receive, I do make that motion.
Support.
Discussions? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, it's received, thank you.
And Executive Directive two thousand eleven, two thousand seven dash eleven, motion to receive.
Support.
Discussion. With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, it's received, thank you.
And then, Mr. Chairman, I have two that we probably all have a copy of.
Yep.
The first would be Resolution two thousand fourteen dash two forty seven, and that is, this year we entered into an agreement with the Health Department to, with Saginaw Valley, to establish a clinic for persons with chronic conditions, and this is to hire some independent contractors, nurse practitioners, to perform that type of work. And I think within that resolution, we're also going to have to add this particular resolve where needed, that it is clearly understood that if these grant funds are terminated, any positions funded by this grant shall be terminated and will not be absorbed by the county, so if we can add that particular resolve into two forty seven, we got it the way we want it.
Support.
Any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
And we have a very nice resolution coming up here, two thousand fourteen dash two forty eight, this is from Kristen, who worked very hard to seek grants, and this particular one is ten thousand dollars for, from the Bay Area Community Foundation, and that's to help pay for the gym floor, and if you play half-court ball, we'll do that side first, okay?
We're worried about that dead spot.
I still want to find that dead spot, I can't find it either. So, Kristen, good job, and I know you're still working to obtain additional grants, because we're going to take care of that floor, probably, it's not this year, early next year, and this will go a long ways towards doing that, and I know you're working on several other grants to do that, so, great job, and this is Resolution two thousand fourteen dash two forty eight, I move this resolution.
Support.
Any further discussion? Mr. Redmond.
It's ten thousand, I don't know if it's fifty, keep going.
I will.
She will do it. No other discussion, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
And Mr. Chairman, that's all the business that we have from Ways and Means.
Thank you, Commissioner Coonan, we'll move to Personnel and Human Services, would be Commissioner Mike Lutz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today we have six items to bring before the commission. First one is Resolution number two thousand fourteen dash two thirty six, it's an agreement between the Bay Area Community Media School District for student work opportunities at the animal control, I still move that.
Support.
Discussion. Mike, I got a question for you. How many, do we keep track of how many animals a month or a year that we've been able to work with the ISD on us?
It averages twenty-two a year between the dog and the cat, depends upon the demands of the veterinary science program out there under Dr. Carol Muslin, but it averages twenty-two a year.
Okay.
And as I pointed out earlier, no cost to the county slash animal control, nor the adopter of the animal.
Very good.
So it's a very good program. It's been in effect since early two thousand nine, and it's worked very well.
Very good. Any questions for Mike? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Act number two is Resolution number two thousand fourteen dash two thirty seven, Community Service Agreement for the Recreation and Facilities for the City of Reno, I still move that.
Questions? I do have one question. On the contracts, there's a possibility for a one-year contract and a two-year contract, wasn't quite sure what, which way we were going with this equipment. There you are. Afternoon.
Good afternoon. John Morris, Bill O'Leary, Brown. Yeah, we were just looking for a one-year contract service agreement. Along with that, there was one question by Commissioner Tilly, who was wondering if she would get certified to work on this equipment. There is a program, they do quick certification, but it's covered in taxes, and there's, it's possible.
Nothing better than hands-on.
Right.
Very good. Anyone else? All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Act number three is Resolution two thousand fourteen dash two thirty eight, if this is never in agreement, matter of balance program for the Division on Aging, I still move that.
Support.
Discussion. With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Fourth item I bring is Resolution two thousand fourteen dash two thirty nine, memorand agreement for United Way RFS VDP program for the Division on Aging, I still move that.
Support.
Discussions? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Fifth item I bring is Resolution two thousand fourteen dash two forty, policy rate for leader positions in Recreation Division from Personnel Department, I still move that.
Support.
Discussion. With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Last item I bring before the board today is Resolution two thousand fourteen dash two forty one, vacation seats on the Division on Aging, Community Center, Health Department, and Juvenile Home from the Personnel Department, I still move that.
Support.
Discussions? Mr. Quinn.
Just a bit of clarification on three A, the Business Service Manager is seventy-five percent grant-funded, the other twenty-five percent is in the budget, and then the three B, the Public Health Nurses, a hundred percent grant-funded, so we should probably move that.
Okay. Anyone else? All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Lutz, we'll move into Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Tilly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we have Resolution two thousand fourteen dash two forty two, reports of the County Executive, I still move this resolution.
Support.
Discussions? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Resolution two thousand fourteen dash two forty three, which is the endorsement of Senate Bill two eighty-one, which I believe is the reimbursement of bridge funding to the city of Bay City, I still move this resolution.
Support.
Discussions? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Resolution two thousand fourteen dash two forty four, support for House Resolution five zero seven eight, which would be the EPA's ability to expand the definition of waters, I still move this resolution.
Support.
Discussions? Commissioner Coonan.
Is there, you know, is there anybody that can give another version, I'm not quite sure, Laura, do you have a handle on this, or no?
Well, it's actually, this is a federal House bill, and what it's actually doing, it's actually asking the presidential administration not to allow for moving forward of the Clean Water Act, the definitions of waters. So that's, we would be voting for that, in support of it, it would be asking to kind of put a freeze on any further movement of the new definition of waters of the US.
Correct. They want to remove the word navigable, in essence, any pond, stream, ditch, anything that holds water, the EPA and Army Corps of Engineers wants to have control over it.
And I would add that would even be seasonal, holding water even on a seasonal basis.
And this is to not allow that.
Correct.
Right, it would put a stop to any forward, you know, promulgation of those rules.
In addition to.
Because, one of the key points here too, is that they want, that they're asking that the federal agencies work with the states and the local entities into developing what those waters are, that should be actually administered under the Clean Water Act, it's asking for local involvement, state participation to define specifically which waters are included under the Clean Water Act, and which ones should not be included under the Clean Water Act. So a vote for this would be asking for kind of a stopping of that process at the federal level, and allowing for more state and local input in defining those waters.
Okay. Commissioner Beget.
Yeah, I was at the Farm Bureau meeting this year, I think I mentioned before, and they, they come out against this, also they're concerned about the water on their property and, you know, restrictions on them, so they've been opposed to it also.
Yeah. Any other discussion? With none, all that, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Yeah, Resolution two thousand fourteen dash two forty five, support for Senate Bill, it must be federal as well, it's an S, S two seven two nine, and HR four three one nine, which is to have an economic feasibility study done on properties prior to designation, I'm guessing, as water.
For habitat.
For habitat, okay. I still move this resolution.
Support.
Discussions? With none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
And Resolution two thousand fourteen And Resolution 2014-246, which is opposition to House Bill 5886, the Michigan Right to Farm Act, which is proposed to include wind energy, I still move this resolution.
Support.
Discussions. Commissioner Tilly.
Somebody fill me in on what this entails, I guess with a bit more detail, because it's very vague, the resolution itself.
Basically, what it comes down to is they want to allow individuals to take up space on farmlands without having any input from the local community. You know, the right to farm, they want to, I guess, the right to grow windmills, the way you would think, but they're just trying to skirt some of the regulations and some of the authority that local communities would have input on, so. Commissioner Coonan.
So what they want to do is have the local community vote whether or not a wind farm's going to go somewhere?
Well, it would take away the right of that, because the farmer would be able to put these windmills up on his property.
That's how they do it now, right?
Correct.
But the only one that likes the windmill is the farmer that's getting paid for it, right?
Pretty much.
So what is this going to do?
This takes it out of these developers' hands of just coming in and dealing with the farmer without having to deal with local commissions and county government.
You mean, they don't have to have, there's not a zoning?
It would take it away from that, because it would be considered farming, putting up a windmill.
Oh, this, so we're in opposition to this?
Correct.
All right.
Correct. Commissioner Lutz.
Yeah, this would negate the zoning ordinances that are in all communities that they now, you know, follow through with, you know, much like how the Maricón did during their thing about 18 months ago. That process would go way into every farmer who'd be able to do it, actually want it.
Pretty much. They would consider that.
Regardless of the municipality and what good or harm it may do.
Correct, they would consider that piece of equipment on their property as vegetables, whatever, they would consider it to be farmed, so. Any other discussion? With none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
That concludes business from the Board of Commissioners, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Tilly. We will move into reports of county officials and departments, and Mr. Hickner obviously is absent.
He stepped out for a moment.
So, Mr. Quinn, anything?
Nothing to report.
Very good. We will move into unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? We'll move into new business. Under miscellaneous, I'd like to remind everyone, because we're having this meeting today with Ways and Means and Human Services, there'll be no other meetings for the balance in November, unless something of importance comes up, and then we will call it with enough notification so that we would meet our criteria of letting people know about the meetings, okay? Any announcements? No parades, no picnics, no nothing, right? Just snow.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Whoa, Amber?
Yes, I don't know if this qualifies for an announcement, but I did want to bring it up, just because I want to say how proud I am of a number of Bay County employees as it relates to our health-driven programs on behalf of the county. There were 30 individuals who were involved in a weight loss challenge over the last 12 weeks, and those individuals, as a total, lost close to 300 pounds over the past 12 weeks.
Wow.
And I just wanted to say kudos to them, good job.
Awesome. And of course, Thanksgiving's around the corner, so.
That's why, that's why we ended it earlier.
Do you want to report December?
Yeah, no.
All right. As far as December goes, we have an appointment, Division on Aging Advisory Committee, it's for two-year terms for districts two, four, six, and one at large, just to remind you. Is there a need of a closed session, Amber?
There is not.
Very good, then, I think we'll wait till he sits. Now would be in order for a res, to adjourn.
Do you have anything?
Mr. Hickner, do you have anything to add this afternoon?
No.
Motion to adjourn would be in order.
Support.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned.